Sports columnist, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
It's Here and Now.
Worldwide, millions of children grow up in orphanages. In Uganda, these facilities get support from abroad, but there are questions about how much the kids benefit from that money.
While good intentions underlie, orphanages and children's homes are not having the kind of impact and outcomes we would hope.
Uganda's orphanages are series runs next week on The World. The World, Monday through Thursday afternoons at 3 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is supported by the Academy Center of the Arts in Lynchburg, presenting Lady Smith Black Mom Bazo, performing Thursday, March 7 at 7:30. Details at academycenter.org.
The Radio IQ app features a sleep timer and built-in alarm clock, so you can listen to Radio IQ all day long, go to sleep, and wake up the next morning to your favorite station. Just download the Radio IQ app today.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station and MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Landmark College, offering professional development for educators, including an online graduate-level certificate in learning differences and neurodiversity. More at landmark.edu/certificates.
It's Here and Now. Scientists are trying to find ways to protect and restore oyster populations. We're seeing the same problems across the country. Oyster populations are at historic lows because of habitat loss, overfishing, and nutrient pollution. But a new program in North Carolina is looking to restore 500 acres of oyster sanctuaries in Pamlico Sound, the largest lagoon on the East Coast. And as WUNC Sophie Mallinson reports, the program's goals extend beyond the water's edge.
On a cloudless sunny day, a group boards a 21-foot boat and sets out on Pamlico Sound to check on a handful of human-made oyster reefs.
Why don't we tie into the buoy?
At each stop, North Carolina State University grad students Rebecca Ruiz and Michaela Carrier measure water quality. Meanwhile, researchers John Brooks and Melissa LaCrosse suit up for their dive into the shallow turbid water.
Seventy sounds a lot warmer than it is.
At one point, Brooks breaks through, holding a muddy collection of concrete-looking material.
Now, these are mussels up top, but below are these large oysters. And these are large adults.
North Carolina's oyster population has declined by about 90% since the 1900s. To combat the loss of these natural water filters and their vibrant habitats, the North Carolina Coastal Federation has been establishing oyster sanctuaries. Last August, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration awarded more than $14 million to aid these efforts. But establishing new reefs isn't enough. Marine biologists have to make sure the oyster restoration efforts are actually working. That's where graduate student Rebecca Ruiz comes in.
I just wiped off oyster slime off of my, inside of my hand.
She's part of a new NC State program the Noah Grant is also funding. This summer, she'll start conducting research to monitor the health and biological footprint of oyster reefs. But today, she's collecting reef instruments she'll reuse in the summer.
You can pull it all the way up, but you should be careful.
The divers hand Ruiz and Carrier muddy tools that monitored the health of these oyster reefs.
Check out those barnacles.
Ruiz scrapes barnacles off a hydrophone. The five-inch cylindrical tool records acoustic data to help determine if new oyster reefs are successful in promoting biodiversity like this.
So what you're hearing are snapping shrimp. And then that thumping you heard in the background is probably a type of cyanid fish, like a drum or a croaker.
Dave Eggleston is Director of NC State's Center for Marine Sciences and Technology. The center is leading the new oyster project at NC State. Eggleston says the program will fund four graduate students for three years, plus three undergraduate students each summer. While these students will monitor the ecological performance of restored reefs, Eggleston says the program has another goal for his profession.
It's not very diverse. And I think that what we see in general is the more diverse the population, quite often, the better the idea is. So that's what's driving this.
Marine science is an overwhelmingly white field. The U.S. Department of Education shows for the past decade that white students earn about 70% or more of the marine biology and oceanography degrees than students of color. The new program aims to address that by specifically recruiting students from underrepresented communities.
The idea is to, instead of just recruiting one underrepresented student, kind of working solo, we're recruiting this sort of cluster hire of graduate students that are underrepresented to represent a cohort that can not only work together, but also these graduate students become mentors of the undergraduate students.
Two graduate students have been recruited so far, including Rebecca Ruiz. Ruiz, who's Puerto Rican, says she was interested in the marine sciences from a young age. But in high school, she began having doubts about going into the field.
Seeing that the people who already had their boat experience, all their fishing experience was through their childhood, with it being a very dominant thing in white culture to do, I felt like I was behind already because I didn't grow up with learning how to ride a boat or knowing the basic species that are present in the Gulf, et cetera, et cetera.
Ruiz says that familiarity is often taken as competency. But Ruiz says her tenacity led her to work in the programs, like the one at NC State. And she says it's reassuring. In programs. In programs. Programs, like the one at NC State. And she says it's reassuring knowing inclusion-based programs exist.
It feels very encouraging and relieving to know that there are programs out there that are specifically searching for you and that you are not only welcome, but considered capable.
After a morning of measurement-taking and barnacle scraping, the team cranks the boat back on its trailer and packs up. As they do, Ruiz says she's excited to train and eventually helm her own research excursions. For Here and Now, I'm Sophie Mallinson.
And elsewhere on today's show, we're taking a closer look at research that shows a notable segment of American voters needs to have some chaos in politics.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Robin, the research is fascinating. Derek Thompson at The Atlantic looked into this, and he found that some people on both sides of the political spectrum are so unhappy with the way things are, they want to burn it down or just destroy the established order.
It's a great conversation. You know, it sounds somewhat like the '60s, but we're going to take a look at why this modern-day movement is growing now and what it means for our democracy. You can find that conversation at hereandnow.org. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Robin Young in Boston.
And I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix. The latest news is next. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station.
Intelligence is not supposed to be harnessed by politicians to knock off their enemies. It's supposed to be there to inform decision-makers as they look at this crazy, big, confusing world and try to make the right call.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
That's The Daily, weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is supported in part by UVA's Religion Lab, producer of the podcast Sacred and Profane, a look at religion in unexpected places. New episodes at religionlab.virginia.edu.
Radio IQ.
The 2:00 p.m. session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Mrs. McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Volleson.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here, and a quorum is present. The invocation this afternoon will be delivered by Reverend Terry Kemp. Reverend Kemp? Oh, hi. And he's the children's pastor and ministry's director for Fort Chiswell Church of God. And Reverend Kemp is also a city employee with the Engineering Department Division. So we're pleased to have you to give our invocation today. Reverend, as you come forth, I will say, I'll lead everybody in the prayers of allegiance following the invocation.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day and the many blessings and abundant goodness you bestow upon each of us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the city and community with the talents and abilities you have given each of us for your glory. We ask for your guidance to each member of this council and all of our city leaders in their endeavors to represent the citizens of this city with a professional and unbiased vision to benefit the citizens of Roanoke. Let us respectfully acknowledge the viewpoints shared here today of each attendee so as not to be divided by our differences, but united in our mutual pursuit of accomplishment. We pray for your divine inspiration for the decisions made in this chamber today to have a positive and enduring impact on our community. Keep your protective hand over this city and lead us into even greater achievements in our future. Let each of us approach our daily responsibilities with integrity, a desire for excellence, and a spirit of cooperation. Dear God, be our source of inspiration for great accomplishment as the city of Roanoke continues to be a leading example of increasing progress and community partnership for years to come. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Kemp. All right, welcome everybody to our second session of today. And as we move into this afternoon's meeting, the first order of business is for us to come out of closed session. And I'm going to ask Mr. Pretty if he would make the motion.
Mayor Lee, I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council and attendants certify to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council and attendants.
Second.
All right, it's removed and second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. Announcements for the day. The city's clerk's office is accepting applications for three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office, expiring on June 30, 2024. Three-year terms of office will commence July 1, 2024, and end on June 30, 2027. Incumbent School Board trustees are Michael L. Cherry II, Diane M. Cosola, who is not seeking reappointment, and Mark K. Kathy, who is not eligible for reappointment. Applications and information describing the duties and responsibility of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city's Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov or may be obtained by contacting the clerk's office here in the Nothell Municipal Building at, and between the hours of 8 and 5 p.m. The deadline for applications is Monday, next Monday, March 11, at 5:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me. Should I ask the question as to how many applications we have received thus far? Since we're close up to the deadline?
Well, yeah, we can do that. There are three applications we had out of last week.
Two.
Two? Two applications.
Okay, I'm just asking because the deadline is so close. Just want the public to hear that the deadline is in. All we have so far is two applications, and there's three seats.
Well, we're going to get applications up until 4:00, 4:59 on the level.
But that's fine. I just wanted to get that out.
That's where it always is.
Yeah.
That's all it is. But we emphasize after 5:00. We'll curtail that. It's over. But next Monday at 5:00 p.m. And again, as Ms. Moon Reynolds mentioned, there are, well, all three have to come back and come before this council. But two are not eligible. And one has determined they're not interested, and another one is not eligible for reappointment. So actually, we got two, two people and one incumbent that will, will hear next Monday. Or we'll close it next Monday. And you can contact the clerk's office. They can help you complete an application. It's not a complex process. So if you have any questions, you can do that. And for any other information, the clerk's office phone number is 540-853-2541. Or you can mail your application to the clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov. All right, item number two on the agenda this afternoon is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none. And item number three is a hearing of citizens upon public matters. And let me say, council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard, those that sign up to speak. And all matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And so with that, I'll ask, Madam Clerk, if there are any citizens signed to speak up.
Yes, we have nine.
How many?
Nine.
To, okay, upon public matters, there are signs to speak up?
Yes.
All right. Well, if you would call them in the order that they signed up, we'll go from there.
I will, I will call the first three people. Dr. Brenda Hale, Frida Cathcart, and Anne Martin.
Let me ask, you all have signed up to speak at the Evan Springs. Can they speak to that, Mr. Spencer?
Yes, there's no public, we've held the public hearing on that. This is the second reading coming up. So this would be an appropriate time to speak on that issue.
Right now?
Right now.
Right now. All right, you need to speak on it now because we've had the public hearing on it. Okay. So those names again.
Dr. Brenda Hale, Frida Cathcart, and Anne Martin.
One right after another. Once the speaker finishes, we'll follow her.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, all that are present today. I bring your greetings from the Roanoke branch, NAACP. And I would like to speak on Evan Springs. So many things have been said. The first thing that I would like for you to consider is the word "master plan." Municipalities all across this nation are doing away with the word "master" because of what it means down through the generations and how it was used during slavery times and after that. So I just want you to consider that. I know you can't do anything about it today, but you would never know what I'm bringing forth if I don't present it. And NAACP branches all across the nation, they are standing up for this word to be stricken from the word that municipalities use, "master plan." Also, I would like to bring to your attention that there have been so many communications, so many concrete facts that have been disseminated and flowed through you through emails, through conversations about Evan Springs. Deborah Carter has done a yeoman's job of research and finding concrete facts for you to evaluate and take in consideration. There have been so many others that have brought you so many concrete facts. All I'm asking you to do is please read them, and I hope you have read them by now, all of the emails and information that have flowed through you. Also, the clarion call made by your constituents. These are your constituents. They feel like they have never been listened to. And over 25 years, I've been coming to city council, and I can understand why they feel like that because it starts out one way and ends up another. So we tried to be proactive and start at the beginning and not be proac, I mean, not be reactive. If you're proactive, you can make a difference. If you're reactive, it's all over and done with, and nobody hears what you have to say. Today, I'm asking you, please, because the plan is not good. The plan is not perfect. The plan is not the best one. Please, if you can't do the no, can you table it until you have a better plan? Thank you so much, and I appreciate you allowing me to finish my words.
Thank you. My name is Frida Cathcart. I'm the district director on the Soil and Water Conservation Board. At the last council meeting, one of the members expressed concerns about why was the surrounding areas developing faster than Roanoke City was? And what can we do to make a difference about that? Well, one of the things that Roanoke City can do to make a difference about that is to make sure that the places, the land that's zoned in Roanoke City, is appropriate for what its purpose is. And I bring that up in regards to Shenandoah Woodlands. Y'all remember when there was a big uproar about the Shenandoah Life Woodlands potentially being developed into apartment complexes? That was zoned for that to happen. The city had no involvement with that at all. There was nothing the public could do to stop it except to whine about it, which we did a lot. But you know what I think stopped it? When they got in there and analyzed the land. Because they went in there and did testing on it. And I don't think they were able to get the permits because of the lay of the land and where it was located near Tormuri Run. Now, the Evan Springs is a lot of wetlands. And your 2013 plan said in there that federal and state permits needed to be secured before a master plan was created. Now, out of deference to what Ms. Hale just said, I'll just call it a comprehensive plan. But when you have comprehensive plans, like our 2040 plan, you should have information in it that is consistent, like building trust. Being in harmony with nature is a big part of that comprehensive plan. You better make sure when you are looking at things that you have taken in consideration the state and federal laws. There are state and federal laws protecting wetlands. Those private owners cannot go in and clearcut their land. They are not allowed to. That would be illegal. would be illegal. Saying that passing this plan is somehow bringing about protections is not true. And I'm tired about these accusations about misrepresentations. Because of those accusations, a folder has been created, a Google folder, you can go to my Facebook page, Frida Cathcart, Soil and Water Conservation District Director, to get a link to it, and you will find all the facts in there linked to the substantiating evidence. What we have a lot of is missing information, not misinformation, missing information. Where is your social inventory for urban renewal about families that were displaced and might be harmed by this plan? Where is the wetlands delineation and the permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and the D E Q? Y'all don't have it, you don't have enough information to vote on this plan. I'm asking you to reject it or detable it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Anne Martin, I'm a citizen. I was last speaking to the chamber in 2011 on the same issue, and what just strikes me today, I don't have facts to impart more than others have done, but the legacy that this body offers the valley is very important. And when I read the responses twenty-five years on of people who were involved in urban renewal, for example, the editor of the News, of the Roanoke Times, he said, "I didn't know the implications of, of what we were reporting on. I didn't know what would redound from all this." And he, he admitted that, and I feel like sometimes we don't know the result of our actions, so I'm asking you to consider the legacy of that land.
Richard Norman, Deborah Carter, and Jenny Waring.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. A couple of months ago, at a city council meeting that I attended, one of your members mentioned how storytelling can be a way to heal wounds. Well, many of the people who are part of this Friends of Evan Springs have been telling their stories and the stories of their ancestors for decades. For storytelling to be a source of healing, someone needs to be listening, someone with an open mind and a genuine interest in helping, someone who hear, someone who can hear the fears, the disappointment, the frustration and sorrow in their voices, and be willing to assist them, assist them in finding a resolution to the issues. That's what you, as elected officials, are here for. You have been given the trust of the people who elected you to office to protect them from exploitation, displacement, and any other harm that comes with being marginalized and feeling not being heard or taken seriously. Some of you in the past have stated that you were not in favor of developing Evan Springs, but now you seem to be willing to follow the lead of the city manager and other city officials who are proposing a nineteen-eighties vision of city planning that disregards the needs and concerns of the very residents who will be most impacted by your decision. The problem with this nineteen-eighties vision is that we don't have a nineteen-eighties climate anymore. We are nearly a quarter of the way through the twenty-first century, and the house is on fire. We do not need to be cutting down a hundred acres of life-given carbon storing and air purifying trees so a few people can make a profit. That's why there are state and federal laws to protect marginalized communities. There are also state and federal laws to protect the function of the wetlands, which will require any property owner to get permits before they can cut down the trees. Now, I have been a part of the Friends of Evan Springs for a while now, and I have seen at least a hundred or more signs that say, "Save Evan Springs." What I have not seen is one sign that says, "Pave Evan Springs." These people are asking you to save Evan Springs for their children, their grandchildren, and all of their relations yet to come, as well as their ancestors who are with them in spirit. And last but not least, we are asking you to save Evan Spring because of the countless forms of life that calls Evan Springs, that call, that call Evan Springs home. Please, either reject this ill-conceived plan today, or at least table it for a couple of months and do more research so you can have a more informed decision. And I also will ask that you give Dr. Rupert Cutler's recommendations serious consideration. They seem to be well thought out, based on his own personal experience and research, and it wouldn't cost the city a dime. Thank you.
I'll have my phone up here, I also want to let you all know, I'll be around as a resource if you have any questions.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. As was touched on earlier, this is from the 2013 Evan Springs Area Plan, on page five. A detailed master plan will ultimately be needed before development begins and will likely be required when property is rezoned. Page seventeen, buried in the details. Development around Lake Run and former Fairlon Lake site will entail extensive review process. This is due to the existence of the floodplain and wetlands on the land. The state and federal agencies involved in this process include Army Corps of Engineers, Federal Emergency Management Agency, D E Q, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Much of the site analysis and engineering will take place while working through this process. The city will not approve a development plan until all state and federal permits are secured. Show me the permits. Friends of Evan Springs comes with you with the list of demands. A wetland due diligence, environmental site assessment, and environmental impact assessment on any land found to be outside of the wetland perimeters. Environmental justice report included in the Evan Springs master plan. Once you have secured the state and federal permits and have these reports in hand for public access, then you can come back to the table, and we will discuss what would be happening in Evan Springs. Anything less than that is bad faith on the city of, of Roanoke to your residents and any developer you attract to buy property that you rezoned to commercial, just for them to find out they not own land they can't do anything, can't do anything with. And I would like to have this entered into the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and citizens, I'm Jenny Waring. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Some of my comments are going to be duplicative of some that have already been made. As a retired federal prosecutor of environmental crimes, I am aware of the importance of preserving wetlands and not having development encroaching on wetlands. I also prosecuted a case locally that involved the death of the endangered species, the Roanoke log perch. Passing or endorsing this plan for Evan Springs without having a professional environmental compliance and assessment for both wetlands and the presence of the Roanoke log perch seems premature. Developers might be misled to infer that the plan allows the development described and might cause developers to expend resources looking toward developing according to that plan, only to discover that much of that plan cannot meet federal and state environmental requirements for wetlands and endangered species. I therefore urge you, urge you, urge you to table this until a master, until a professional environmental assessment has been completed.
Barbara Dirk, Naomi Clements, and Richard Fife.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council and city staff. This is Monday, marvelous Monday. I want to thank each of you for, for sitting on City Council. I know when you ran for City Council that you had dreams and expectations of what you wanted to accomplish. I don't know if you, you realize that you would be sitting on the dais today talking about land development, but I want to thank you for listening to all the citizens who have had input, all the people in the area who have concerns about our home, Roanoke, because we all consider Roanoke our home, and you do too, because you are the ones that are making it possible for us to, to work, play, and recreate, and, and just, just live in Roanoke. I sent an email to the city attorney as stating about the 2013 plan and it requiring plans to be approved before there was a master plan, and if that today's master plan that you are approving for the, to be included in the 2024 comprehensive plan would mandate that planning take that Evan Spring master plan into consideration. Mr. Spencer had not received it, evidently used the wrong email, but I had copied all of you on that email too. The Evan Spring master plan is, as it is, you're voting today, is to be included in the 2024 comprehensive plan. I believe that the comprehensive plan is a guide that we use for all of our planning. The Evan Spring master plan has faults to it and would like for it to be revisited to better, better accommodate its, its purpose. Development is important, go for the Melrose Plaza, that's a walkable community, people in that area can walk to, to the grocery store, develop a Melrose Orange Avenue corridor plan, and let's update that area. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, thank you for letting us speak today. I'm the numbers person, I have the master's degree in applied math, I've taught math for forty years, including math of finance and statistical reasoning. I looked at the numbers, the marketing analysis, and the economic impact statement. There's actually quite a lot of vacant housing units in Roanoke, over five thousand, but the marketing analysis does show they're older and of poorer quality. So what do we do? Do we allow developers to chew up the last green spaces, the last cool spots, or do we find incentives for redevelopments of rundown areas of town? I've looked, this value-added thing, to say that this is going to bring $2.9 billion of economic benefit to Roanoke is just highly misleading. Value-added, I've looked up on the consult, the InPlan software they use for planning this, it's goods and services. The goods and services of this development are going to be the products sold in the stores, the food in the restaurants, cleaning, maintenance of apartments, personal care services. That profits from those businesses are going to go to the corporate owners of the big-box stores, the strip mall stores, and the apartment complexes. Very little of that money is actually going to stay in Roanoke. There's the employee compensation, and then there's labor income, those are the same dollars. The employee compensation, some of that's going to stay in Roanoke. The labor income part, they talk, that's the idea that the money's going to be recirculated in Roanoke. It's going out to Kroger Corporation, Walmart Corporation, and to the property owners of apartment buildings, very little of it staying in Roanoke. Then there's the cost of that interchange, but it's not just the interchange in this economic and fiscal impact analysis. It, there's going to need streets, water, sewer lines, stormwater detentions will drive that number higher. It could cost not just sixty million for the interchange, but another twenty, thirty for the other infrastructure. How much are the developers going to pay, and how much is the city going to be on the hook? There's a paragraph here, it talks about the cost of financing, ten million dollar general obligation bond, five percent interest, most of the city's long-term debt obligations are twenty years. This plan talks about the city paying part of that cost. How much? Forty million plus interest over twenty years adds up to eighty million unless you pay it off early. You sell those bonds at five percent, and the interest rate goes down. No, no, the bondholder is not going to want to sell those bonds back early to, so you can reduce the cost. I don't think it's going to be the moneymaker for the city that the plan claims. They claim fifty-eight million dollars advantage of tax revenue, that's all going to be spent on the infrastructure. Thank you very much for listening.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. City Attorney. My name is Richard Fife, I live on Lycliff Avenue in, in the city. I've had the great privilege of being able to talk to numbers of you and numbers of members of city staff about much of how the city operates with regard to Evan Spring. I too would like to ask that you table this master comprehensive plan until more complete information is made known. In my conversation with different members of staff, others, I have asked several questions and gotten different kinds of answers. I want to present several questions before you today and ask you, someone on Council, to ask our city attorney his response or his answers to these questions, to put that on record so that we understand his view, the legal view to these, the answers to these questions. The questions are, is it possible for the city to purchase some of the Evan Spring land around the spring, water shed, and floodplain using eminent domain protocols? How would you calculate the amount of money that would need to be given to purchase the land? This is an important question before you rezone the land and it changes its value. Number two, are there any circumstances under which, any circumstances, under which the city could use eminent domain protocols to purchase the houses on Top Hill Drive? And if so, what circumstances would those be? And number three, there are a number of things you lay out in the comprehensive or concept master plan, one of which is an access road coming in for five eighty-one, and we are told that that road would not enter into the neighborhoods. I want to know, are there any circumstances under which that could change? Is that something that could be negotiated away, or is that something that's fixed? Think all those are significant to us all for our consideration in terms of this plan and the future of our city. I'd like to enter these comments into the official record. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of our speakers, all right? Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are continued to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion on the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved, thank you. All right, our next item is, we go right into our regular agenda. There are no public hearings today. Petitions and... Petitions and communications, item number 61, features a presentation by the Friends of Evan Springs to share compatible goals in connection with the Evan Springs property. Stephen Nemicki is the spokesperson sponsored by Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember Moon Stephen, we're allowing 10 minutes for this presentation.
Thank you. While he does that, I'm going to go ahead and start. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Nemicki. I'm the founder of Friends of Evan Spring. Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council, city staff. Love for the city of Roanoke is the first item that I've shared with you by email. And with that, I'd like to say, I'm a resident of nearly 63 years in Roanoke. My parents moved here in the summer of 1961, shortly after I was born. My parents were medical professionals employed at Borough Memorial Hospital. I lived in the same house in Roanoke since May of 1966. I dearly love Roanoke. I'm proud of the fact that Roanoke is a seven-time All-American city. I would like to see it be recognized an eighth time. I believe we have compatible goals. We disagree on how to reach those goals. I respect the difficulty of your assignment as a member of Roanoke's council. It is perhaps the most challenging leadership role in any city across the country. Still, I am going to challenge you to be true to your word and give you some tough love. I acknowledge that Evan Spring's development is not urban renewal. I will illustrate why the issue of urban renewal continues to surface again. Reparations. The YouTube video Hidden in Plain Sight outlines a detailed and embarrassing history of Roanoke. Your support of the film is admirable. Your knowledge of the history makes you accountable. A written apology is not enough. You must take action. The film and the book Root Shock illustrate the fact that Roanoke has a reputation for being one of the most racist cities in the history of the United States. The shameful truth is that Roanoke waged a war against its own citizens, a war without bullets, bombs, or bloodshed. While there is no bloodshed, the trauma experienced by the community was so pervasive that it continues to reverberate in subsequent generations. Given this painful truth, I encourage you to draw on your experience of being a member of historically oppressed groups. I ask you to recall how it feels to be marginalized, subjugated, minoritized as you make decisions for the city. Building Trust. During the first meeting with the consultants, we were told that no development was an option. Literally, within 30 seconds of beginning the community engagement process, they lied to us. To build trust, your words must match your actions. Contradicting your words only extends the violation of trust. Any future promises or value statements become hollow words viewed with suspicion, and unfortunately, this describes the situation in Roanoke. The original Climate Action Plan stated that their quote will be "a focus on healing historical trauma as a prerequisite for heat resilience planning." This statement was removed when the plan was revised. The removal of this statement is a significant cause of concern and a reason for distrust and suspicion. Protecting the Environment. On January 16, 2024, you declared this year as the Year of the Tree. Now you're planning on cutting down thousands of trees. The city's website has illustrations about the Heat Island Effect, which clearly shows that Evan Spring and the airport are the only cool spots in all of northwest Roanoke. Removing trees will only increase the heat index. This gives no consideration to the fact that northwest Roanoke is 7 to 10 times warmer than the rest of the city. The life expectancy of someone who lives in 24017 is six years shorter than someone who lives in 24018, according to Corillian's Health Assessment in 2023. One of the slides seems to have gotten deleted. So number six was violence reduction. There's a relationship between the heat index and violence. The Temperature Aggression Theory explains that hot weather induces interpersonal violence by increasing discomfort, frustration, impulsivity, and aggression. In the context of the situation before us, the removal of trees is an act of violence. You cannot reduce violence if you're acting violently. Okay, I'll leave that up. Children's Well-Being. Our children do not get a vote. They must rely upon you completely to protect themselves. Roanoke's assault against its citizens has negatively affected more than three generations of African-American, of the African-American community. Today's decision will affect the fourth generation, possibly more. Today's decision will directly impact the lives of our youngest children and the yet unborn. A vote of yes will extend the city's legacy of racism, violence, and disrespect into the unforeseeable future. Today's decision will be the most important decision the city will make this century. It will define the relationship between the African-American community and the city for the remainder of our lives and beyond. Picture this: Baby Roanoke is not well. The body of baby Roanoke lies on the operating table before you. You are the pediatric surgeon. Your vote is your surgical knife. You have two choices in the context of the situation. You can remove part of the lungs, known as trees, in a body that is already struggling to breathe, or you can remove the cancer of racism that permeates the body. The choice is purely yours. We are as vulnerable as the infant laying on the table that has been anesthetized by the lofty words on the city's website. Honoring Our Ancestors. It pains me to even think about the city's authorizing, planning, and implementing the desecration of African-American graves. It is the most extreme and vile act of war, dominance, and subjugation that one people can wage against the other. It is an act of hate and disrespect that makes spitting on someone's grave look like a compliment. It is unlikely that the city will undertake a project to find and identify the bodies that were removed as I-581 was paved. It is likely that there are bodies that were not removed but carelessly and heartlessly paved over by I-581. This is the most embarrassing component of Roanoke's reputation as a racist city. It must be addressed. The issue of urban renewal will continue to surface until something is done. Leaving a Legacy. Waldrop, Puckett, Davies, Haynes, Pickett, Young, and Dillard. Sounds like the name of a long, of a large law firm, but it's not. These are the names of City Council members in 1955. Their legacy is that of traumatizing and disemboweling the spirit of the African-American community through unthinkable acts of violence. There is a child who has not yet been born who will read the names Lee, Cobb, Whiteboyd, Moon Reynolds, Volason, Sanchez Jones, and Pretty as members of council on this day. They will view the YouTube videos of your meetings. They will contemplate your legacy as leaders and decision-makers, and they will discover that on the 20th of February during Black History Month and the 51st day of the Year of the Tree, as you designated, the Council of Roanoke voted to adopt the Evan Spring Plan despite flawed planning, insufficient community engagement, and the violation of their own stated values in the midst of a worldwide climate crisis. It is as if the city walked through the most vulnerable neighborhood, carelessly flicking a burning unfinished cigarette on the ground, as people so often do, thinking that their decision didn't matter in the broader context of things. Equity and Inclusion. What do we want? We want equity as described on the city's website, which calls for you to dispense of business as usual and take a different approach. We want inclusion. We want a seat at the table as the Evan Spring Plan is revised and updated to match the current climate concerns. We want to work with the city to explore all possible options for preserving Evan Spring, including the purchase of the property and eminent domain. We want no commercial development. We want decisions related to Evan Spring to be the beginning of building trust and repairing the harm from the past. We want to show respect for your, we want you to show respect for yourself and your legacy by keeping your word. Thank you. I know this was difficult to hear, but these things needed to be said. Again, I come from a place of love for the city, respect for your leadership, and trust that you will rise to the challenge. Thank you.
All right, Stephen, we nominate during this session, I give the people who sponsor you, which are Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember Moon Reynolds, if they have any comments or questions they'd like to make. So Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Stephen, for this really good overview of your compatible goals and specific things you're asking for. I appreciate the focus on equity as well. I think in my remarks at the February 20 meeting, I commented that while I think there are a lot of strengths to this plan, one of the things that seems to be missing is a healing component, which is part of interwoven equity.
Yep. I appreciate that.
And there, well, there are numerous ways to get at that. And one is, I'm not sure we've fully explored the role that our Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board can play in the planning process, and I'm not sure that they've had an official role in the review of this process and plan. And if we were to have any delay in approving this, I would recommend that we refer it to them to simply review and see what recommendations they have, because I think that's a critical role they can play. If that doesn't happen, I think it's something that we need to strongly consider for any plan that we develop that's to be part of our comprehensive plan, because interwoven equity is a critical part of that plan. The same token, I want to commend our planning department, who really did the yeoman's work along with the community to develop that comprehensive plan. We didn't have consultants come in to do that. Our planning department did that, and it was well-received and broadly received, because I think we had really good input from the community, a lot of ownership in that. And I feel like there are pieces of this that we've kind of stepped away from that. And I don't, I'm not going to say that was intentional, because I don't believe it was.
I don't think so either.
But I think we've missed some places where we could have done a full-circle review with, whether it's Friends of Evan Spring or the community. Here's the plan we've come up with. We want to bring it back to you to show where your ideas have made an impact in influencing and changing this plan, and where we weren't able to accept those and have some conversation. I don't, I'm not sure that that occurred.
I agree.
So I think that contributes to people feeling like they're not being listened to or not being heard. So that's just, that's an observation. It's not a judgment. It's an observation. But I want to just thank you for this really good overview that you gave and prioritizing what the focus of Friends of Evan Spring has been all along. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I appreciate what the Vice Mayor has said. Some of those comments were mine, so I won't repeat them, but I do thank you for wanting to come and present this presentation, to have an opportunity to share some background, which you have done, and I think I will reserve the rest of my comments to the end on the unfinished business. Again, a lot was said at the February 20 meeting. I still believe in that, where there was no additional or lack thereof, I should say, community engagement, and I still believe that needs to be held here.
I agree.
It's been brought up, just like you did in your presentation, as some of the comments have been made. We have left that piece out. We may have had the consultants do that, but I believe we did not touch on a lot of things that are still left unanswered. And I still have some concerns and reservations that these things could come back and truly, as you say, with legacy, it could come back and haunt us as a city, as we've seen in past history. If you don't reveal what's happened in your history, it will come back, and we've seen that in a lot of urban renewal, even though we don't consider this to be urban renewal, but we have seen that happen when we don't adhere to what the past says to us. We don't listen to the past, and I believe we really need to take that step back and take a overview, look back into what is it we are missing or what we have not uncovered before moving forward with this development plan. So yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before I move on, any other councilmembers have any comments?
Stephen, mine's probably a little bit less than your topic, and I understand two other members decided to sponsor this today, and I was hesitant to even decide whether or not to co-sponsor this, but I was glad two other people decided to. I would like to say thank you for keeping your remarks short. I know that both times that we've had requests for very lengthy presentations with which people could come before council and speak with us, and I do believe that over the last year and a half, we have had very lengthy presentations.
I had two seconds left.
On this, well, and something I wanted to point out, and something that I was bothered about from the previous time, and just to clarify that, and I forgot to read this till right before, our rules actually say that you get 15 minutes.
Okay, well, let me continue.
Well, not for today, but it was when I saw that that I realized that having someone come back a second time, what happened with our last presentation, this would be appropriate for today, and there's a calm environment amongst the room today, even though we know this is a very tense subject that we had to deal with.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. The city manager's briefings, we have none, and we're now going to items recommended for action. The execution of a construction administration amendment in connection with the Wasina Bridge replacement. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of a contract amendment to the city's contract with Mattern &amp; Craig, Inc., for engineering services associated with the Wasina Bridge replacement by Archer Western Construction LLC, and authorizing the city manager to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to provide for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of such contract as amended.
Thank you. Is there any discussion for members of council?
I just have a comment.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Just a short comment, and this is just to the administration, and I just want to thank you, Bob, for the, I guess, I call it transparency, but the outreach with regards to this bridge, this bridge and the amount of marketing and publicity we have put behind it, letting people know that this bridge will be closed, and you have it even in your report, that it's going to close on April the 22nd. I know that the neighborhood, even Wasina neighborhood, is going to have their bridge closing bonanza, so I know that it's out there, and no one will be able to come back and truly say, I didn't know they were closing this bridge. So thank you, sir.
I appreciate that, but I still predict we'll get a phone call that day.
Oh, we may get one, but we know, they know, they're aware of it.
And I will let our community folks know who have done the majority of the work.
Yes, thank you. Pass that on.
And something, if I might, Mr. Mayor, that I'm not even sure the city manager is aware, is that they are also working with our registrar to help communicate to the voters, who might be separated by a river now, on how to get to the vote process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
All right. Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Item B is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation hip grant for downstream Wally Low Water Bridge replacement. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
A resolution accepting highway improvement program funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and authorizing such additional action and execution of any required documents on behalf of the city in connection with such funds.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
Just did.
I think she just did.
Oh, you did? Well, I thought, well, I'm sorry, I'm hearing things. All right, any discussion by members of council?
I just wanted to thank Senator Warner and Senator Kane for their advocacy for this and working through Congress to get this funding to us. I think it's going to make a big difference.
All right. Ms. Pretty?
Just a further comment. I had an opportunity to speak with an individual who works in the industry that makes these kinds of bridges out of precast concrete, and that believe made the bridge that is further up on Wiley Drive. I'm not sure whether or not this is the same individual doing this particular one. But what's noted in the report here, and a lot of what he shared with me, was just how much better this will actually be for the natural wildlife that is in the water there. It allows for better passage of water, and it should help with all of the flooding situations that were occurring. Also, I wanted to thank our federal and state partners for making this happen. And just a question for the city manager, wasn't sure if I missed it in the report. Based on the type of bridge that's being put in, I know this isn't to be done for some period of time, how long should the entire project take, since it's not really building a bridge from scratch? And they really just need a duration. I know you've got all the information in the world, but some estimate of timeline. So you gotta think how long are you gonna run in a different direction or swim through the water if I have to?
Sure. So this bridge construction will be very similar to the upstream Wiley Low Water Bridge that we did in 2010. We're going to use precast concrete. So the estimation is right around 12 months.
Okay.
From when we start the demolition to having it completely open again. So.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, the 12 months does take, does take into account that we do have a threatened endangered species in the Runaway River, so we do have to work around those windows of opportunity also. So that adds a little bit of time, not much, but still around 12 months.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
All right. Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the construction to replace the Wally Low Water Bridge, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 Capital Projects Fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance, budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item C is the acceptance of donation for the Salem Turnpike Walkability Project. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
A resolution accepting funds from Virginia Walkability Institute Equitable Cities, and authorizing such additional actions and execution of any required documents on behalf of the city in connection with such funds.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
Yes, sir. I, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would just like a little brief report, update on this, what it is.
I'm gonna have Rob come up, because he's been involved in this, so he can give the best overview of that.
Yes, thank you.
Just an overview of the project?
Yes, because I see you have the request for three different things to go on. I just wanted it to be highlighted, just so the public has an understanding of what this donation is.
Yeah, so our walkability team was tasked with identifying a project that would improve equity, improve walkability, and we, we chose that location because there's a mid-block crosswalk. It's a 45-foot street at that location, and there's children that are crossing to the Envision Center, and people that are crossing to Resources. There's the beautiful library, and the future Melrose Plaza there. So we have the entire Lansdowne community accessing all of these resources with this one mid-block crosswalk. And the project began with just simply using street art and some bollards to narrow that crosswalk from.
Excuse me, when you talk about the crosswalk, just so the public understand, you're up there actually where the main Rono redevelopment and housing office is at.
Yeah, right.
Right there, where you cross over to the Envision Center.
Exactly.
Okay, just want to make sure we're in where you're referring to.
No, thanks for clarifying, because there's another place where people are crossing down the street too. It's not that official mid-block crosswalk. So yeah, that one. So the initial project was just to use street art, bollards, and road narrowing to reduce the distance that they would cross, and to improve the visibility of people attempting to cross the street there. While we were out there, this is how different elements of the, of the project evolved, we saw that the bus stop was down the street, a little bit to the east, and it was letting people out off in the grass on the north side of the street. And then they're kind of crossing on a diagonal, so the most convenient place for them to cross was a pretty dangerous place for them to cross. So we worked with Valley Metro to move the bus stop to be adjacent to the new and improved crosswalk. And so our initial ask of the Virginia Walkability Institute was to provide some funding to, to pay the artist to help us in development of this street art. And it's, and they agreed to that. And we also further, like our kind of reach ask, was to have them partially fund a RRFB, which is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So if you wanted to cross the street in that location, you wave your hand, lights flash, and it allows motorists to know that there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. It increases yielding behavior by up to 80%. The presence of street art at a crosswalk increases yielding behavior by up to 40% according to a Bloomberg study. So combining those two elements was going to dramatically increase the safety of people crossing the street at that location. So then the members of Equitable Cities and the Virginia Walkability Institute came to Roanoke to do a site visit for what they had basically approved. And they were so impressed by the collaboration of the Health Department, Transportation, Stormwater, the Roanoke Arts Commission, and they said, you know, this really lends itself to a bigger project, kind of a gateway project that could really be a beautiful addition to this community. And that's where it grew from simply a crosswalk to a really a pretty expansive street art project that will be safety increasing. It adds a 10-foot pedestrian space, so basically reclaims the street space on the northern side of Salem Turnpike, where people don't have a sidewalk on the north side. So they're walking in the grass or walking in the street currently, so 10 feet of that space will be reclaimed and protected so that pedestrians can walk along there. And then it further, with partnerships with the Regional Commission and Transportation, added a sidewalk to coincide with the new place where the bus stop is. So now there's an ADA compliant sidewalk with the improved crosswalk. We're adding another crosswalk down the street, because we observed that that's where people are crossing, and there's another bus stop down the street closer to 24th. And so Equitable Cities and the Virginia Walkability Institute said, like, we'd like to give you additional funds if your city could do a bigger project. And they paid street plans $20,000 from a grant that they received to help with expanded plans for this corridor. And that's basically the foundation for, kind of the blueprint for the art for our region or the area. They also donated $11,000 worth of the Sure Curb delineator, which is a 40-inch by 10-inch base that houses a bollard, a vertical bollard, and that's used as a delineation of the pedestrian space from the motor vehicle space. They also paid $3,000 for artist compensation. So basically, the package that you guys have before you is to accept these donations, and the timeline is May of this year for implementation. So yeah, we're way, we're deep in this process, and it's been going great. And if you have further questions, I'd be happy to.
No, you've answered all I wanted to hear. I'm sure the public is, was very interested in knowing that, especially in the public housing sector, to know that these are, these are good things that's coming their way. I think that's awesome.
And Rob, for those that are here, if you would introduce yourself and title it, so folks know who.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Rob, I'm the Complete Streets and Vision Zero Coordinator for the city of Roanoke, kind of a new position in the last couple of years. And this is actually one of the first projects that Wayne Lepwitch assigned me to, he said, or asked Dwayne if he could assign me to, and it worked out pretty well. Got to work with the Regional Commission, the Health Department, members of Carillion, lots of community members, so it's been, it's been a lot of fun. Thank you.
Well, you seem to be excited, and just listening to you talk about it, the excitement in your voice.
Thanks.
So that's good. I know you've put in a lot of time, so I look forward to seeing the outcome.
Thanks, us too.
Yes, sir. I had a few short questions, and hopefully I didn't miss something while I was looking for the answer in here. I see so much of it's going to be used for these Sure Curb and bollard delineators. Are those what best describe, most people are asking for, in protected pike lanes, those, those orange kind of poles that are standing on the side of the road in order to provide some kind of protection?
Yes, so if you've, if you've seen the ones that we have on Ninth Street, these are the exact same product. In fact, because the Equitable Cities Group purchased these for us, we had them in our possession, and we were considering to a protected cycle track on Ninth. We actually brought sections of it into our conference room, talked about how this would work and what it would look like on Ninth Street. So the product that you're seeing on Ninth Street is exactly the same product, and yes, it can be used for the types of delineation that you're speaking of.
Mayor Lee, a follow-up question. I've seen a number of other cities, you know, from time, still, motor operator behavior still sometimes goes beyond where these are, and some of them inevitably get hit. If these are taken out anyway, will the department try to put that into their plan and determine whether or not actual curb cuts or other things might be more useful or protective of people? Both is a question for this project, but just generally across the board, because it gives us an area of where people are straying beyond the lines.
Yes, so the Sure Curb type delineators, any of these, like, plastic delineators are excellent. They do a good job at creating delineation and increasing safety for pedestrians and other users, really all roadway users. They're excellent for traffic calming as well, so motor vehicle speeds are generally reduced when there, when this delineation is present, because it narrows certain areas down. But also, they are not viewed by, I don't think, any city as a permanent thing for that location. So if it's effective in this area, somewhere down the line, that could be made into a hardened curb structure or other permanent infrastructure. But they're very effective, and they look good, and they work well for, for an extended period of time. These delineators are simply inserted into the base. The base is very durable, can be run over a lot of times. The delineators were tested, hit by an Oldsmobile at 50 miles an hour, I forget how many times in their, in their product testing, but, but they last well. You can see some of them on Ninth Street have been hit already, and they're doing okay, hanging in there. But we can replace them very easily as well, to keep them looking good and, and functioning well.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, ready to call a roll?
Mr. Volleson? Oh, he's not here. All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
It's been seconded?
Yes.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Walkability Action Institute for the purchase of traffic equipment and street art, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 Capital Projects Fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Wait, he's back.
Well, he didn't hear the measure. Okay, do you want to vote?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments he may have.
No additional comments, thank you.
All right. We have an item coming from the city attorney, an ordinance amending and reordaining Division Two Permanent Committees. Madam Clerk, do you have copied that ordinance?
Yes, I do.
Could you read the title paragraph for me?
Yes, I will. An ordinance amending and reordaining Division Two Permanent Committees, Article 14, Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Generally, Chapter Two Administration, Section 2-306, Gun Violence Prevention Commission, Code of the City of Roanoke, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, has council had an opportunity to read this ordinance? So any? Oh, okay.
So the presentation.
This is just a briefing, just to go over proposed changes. You each have a copy of the proposed changes. The main thing that this will do is authorize the Chief of Police to be a non-voting ex officio member of this board, as well as to allow up to two non-voting council liaison members, and then two non-voting youth members who shall be under the age of 19. That's the proposal that's included in here, gives council greater flexibility. It's worded in a way that you may appoint these, you don't have to, you don't have to appoint two, you may have one, but up to two council liaison members who are non-voting. So this is just a draft. Now welcome your input and discussion with the idea that if I get agreement from council, we'll bring it back for adoption on the 18th.
Well, I think it's, I'm fine with it. And I'll let you know, but I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I do have questions based on your presentation. First, though, I would like to say, thank you for making sure to draft this in a way that includes non-voting youth members. I know there are a number of times we've met with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission and gotten a whole host of recommendations, and this has been the low-hanging fruit, the easy one, I feel like, that we should be able to get in there and find a way that we can increase participation amongst our youth in the city, but they just won't have a youth on it, but they will have a voice on that board. And so I think that's very important. I do appreciate that. I did have a question, just based on a remark that you made, and I guess I must have missed this in my, my reading of it. So the, this will allow that the mayor would be an ex officio member, no matter what, but they wouldn't be, the mayor wouldn't be required to appoint any member of council? It could be zero additional members?
It could be zero, but up to two.
Okay, well, Mayor Lee, I do appreciate your participation on the commission. And I think it's important to keep the mayor on there. I would hope that it would be at least one, but up to two. I just would hope we wouldn't be in a scenario where it would only be the mayor who serves ex officio, and we wouldn't have any council member involved as a liaison, if there's a way to work with the wording to make that that's sure. And I do hope that two people will ultimately be selected.
It says that it is council members. So I don't think, and I think, correct me, city attorney, but the mayor serves on any and all as an ex officio member automatically.
Yes, as a result of our code.
So that has nothing to do with this neither here nor there.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so I'm around. I'm around. But thank you, and let me just say.
I was only going to add that just the chief, Chief Booth has been participating since his arrival in the meetings, and so even though he has not his arrival in the meetings, and so even though he has not had this official status, he has been participating, attending and participating, and I know in conversation with him, he's very much looking forward to kind of this elevated role, I guess, with it as well, so, thank you.
Well, I'm glad the seat of the chief is going to be sitting there, not as a voting member, but will be there as an ex officio member. Let me say that the Gun Violence Commission, and overall, they've done some good things, and I'm going to tell you that, that, and I'll say, my colleagues on council, we've been chosen by Richmond to do several things, one on, you know, fentanyl, and another one on, on gun violence, a special committee from the Attorney General. One of the reasons they like coming to Roanoke and choosing Roanoke over a lot of cities, let me say, was just, they didn't put their names in the head and pull it out, but they, they said Roanoke has the best infrastructure to deal with issues, especially with the Gun Violence Commission that started, the Star City Group, and a lot of other names that are going on. So, I'm pleased to say that we're ahead of a lot of cities with what we're doing and how we're trying to combat it. Not saying that we're resolving all the issues, because gun violence is a, is a challenge for most urban cities in this country, and you can, you can see that by looking at the news, but the fact that I've been advised by them, or the Governor's wife and, and the Attorney General themselves, that the infrastructure in terms of dealing with issues is a lot stronger here than is in a lot of cities, so I'm proud of that, and I'm glad that as we prove this, eventually come back to you, we'll go forward with what we need to do, and, and again, I'm glad to see the Chiefs there, the police chiefs that'll be sitting on the committees, and I, and I think the, the two liaison positions will give council the information and things that they need to oversee that, and so it wouldn't put the burden on any one person, so.
And, Mayor, if I could, do you want to leave it as a may, or would you like to put it as shall appoint at least one member and may appoint up to two members of City Council?
I think the shall would make Mr. Pretty more comfortable, but I think we all had the understanding there would be two.
There would be two.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go with two, there shall be two.
I will draft that amended language, send it out to you all and get your input so that you feel comfortable, and then bring it back in that change format for the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. All right, we're now down to item number eight, which reports of committees we have known. Item number nine is unfinished business. Ordinance number 42, 42884, 42884, on second reading, approving the Evan Springs Master Plan and Amending City Plan 2040, the City's Comprehensive Plan to Include Such Evan Springs Master Plan, Including the Technical Memos. Now, this ordinance was amended and voted on first reading at the February 20th council meeting. The ordinance before the council will be on its second and final reading.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear to the citizens, in accordance with our Charter, Section 12, we were, this is amended only to the point that the language regarding the waiver of the second reading is removed from this draft, and according to our own Charter section, that that is not a material change to the ordinance itself, so this is just a second reading and requires a simple majority for approval.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, also, just, if I may, just for clarity, the, so the exhibit has also been revised to reflect the action that was taken in the amended ordinance that was presented. So the exhibit, which is the master plan itself, now shows that, that one portion of the property as open space, designated open space, no longer has that development, so that has been completed also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's, as an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance approving the Evan Springs Master Plan and Amending City Plan 2040, the City's Comprehensive Plan to Include Such Evan Springs Master Plan, Including the Technical Memos.
All right, is there a discussion among members of council? Mr. Volson.
I guess I'll start us out. Actually, Susie, what's the password? You don't say it out loud.
He's, he's all the time.
So today, we're here to vote on the second reading of this ordinance, which will approve the new Evan Springs area plan. At our last meeting, I submitted an alternative ordinance that would make two substantive changes to the previous plan. The first one, as you can see on this, is Land Bay E, which has been designated for conservation to remain a forested area. Making this designation will protect all of the land previously proposed for development in Land Bank E that surrounds Evan Springs. This plan will now conserve at least 71 acres, or 47% of the entire 151-acre study area, including all the protected wetlands and previously unprotected ones. And so this one, on this graph, sorry, it's down here, but you can see that it's 71.51 acres that are going to be open space with this new change to the plan. And I also wanted to show this. This is a hydrology report that's been done. These shaded circles there are the federal wetlands, if you look at the, or the National Wetlands Inventory. So as you can see, all of those wetlands are right next to Land Bay E, so we're very much protecting what's going on at Evan Springs. And we also have protected, for when we do have development, if there is development, we have protected those areas that will most likely be needed for the state and federal permits. I also added the technical reports to be included in the final document. I did this to increase transparency with citizens about what issues were studied in greater depth due to concerns brought forward in the community engagement. This information creates guidelines for what the community wants to see done in the future. The technical documents have suggested solutions for the future developers and the city to implement if a rezoning process is ever requested, including, but not limited to, stormwater mitigation, gentrification in local entrepreneurship, interchange costs, watershed analysis, and traffic analysis. These are technical reports that have already been done and have great recommendations for what we can do when we get to the next step of this process, which is the rezoning. This aerial plan will be replacing the 2013 Evan Springs Master Plan and be part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This plan provides a good roadmap for how to use sustainable development practices to maximize the use of the limited amount of developable space we have in the city. I also want to reiterate that no one's homes are being taken. Top Hill residents have the right to be bought out by a future developer, but buyouts would have to be accepted by all owners of Top Hill Drive. Even just one owner not accepting a buyout means that the alternative option must be used for the Top Hill area. I will vote to accept this plan because it helps our community achieve numerous goals and balances competing needs. Here are just 10 of the good things that can, this plan will create for the community. First off, it creates a community village in northwest with grocery services and more neighborhood businesses. Second, it creates an estimated 1,700 full-time jobs at full build-out, and that's not including the 2,077 temporary construction jobs. It increases walkability, which will increase community health outcomes. It increases affordable housing options. It creates a new natural attraction for the area. It provides housing for all generations to live in the neighborhood. It improves our stormwater management. It preserves the land around Evan Springs for both environmental and historical purposes. It improves public safety by making sure there are more eyes on the streets. And it conserves at least 71 acres of forested land to minimize tree canopy losses and flooding effects. I thank everyone who has advocated for their position on this area plan update. My request is that you continue to work with the city in the next steps of this process, namely, any future rezoning. Once we have a master development plan from a developer, then we can start to make more specific requirements that are recommended in the technical documents a part of this rezoning. I also request that the City Manager direct staff to work with any organizations that would like to purchase the land for conservation from the owners. Our staff should assist any group in the process that is trying to gain funds, whether that's through grants or anything like that, directly referring to Mr. Cutler's idea of, of purchasing that area. If that's something that can be done before a developer, then that's what can be done. But I want to thank everybody for their participation, and I also really want to thank our planning department and the consultants that we used. This was not an easy task to try and figure out what to best do with this area, but I think that they've come up with a good roadmap for us to continue to develop a plan that works for everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion? From members of the council?
Let's see if I can gather my, my thoughts on all of this. Thank you for the overview that Councilman Volson gave, and I, I do want to make some positive remarks about it. I do believe that the attempts that are being made here do make this plan better, or I'd say, less harmful than the original plan is. I'd still say that in its current posture, I don't believe that it's gone to the point to gain my support, although we saw what the vote was last time, and have a good feeling where the vote might be going this time. There are a number of things I want to address in the plan, but I did want to ask a procedural question to the City Attorney about what would and what wouldn't constitute a material change in this, of what could be done. I'm not asking to give a broad overview, I have direct questions to ask on that, so that you can make sure that any changes that might be made to the ordinance at this time wouldn't prohibit, I guess, its passing for the rest of council. But one of the comments that was brought up earlier referenced how this was referred to as a master plan, and I know that that term shows up at least in our ordinance, and it does in the documents, at least from a cursory look, because urban planning is not my expertise. You know, other terms that I've seen involve, you know, either saying a guiding plan or a collaborative plan, although I'm not sure collaborative would be the most appropriate word here, or even just saying that the Evan Springs Development Plan. If that amendment were made to this, so it wasn't referred to as a master plan, would that be considered a material change, or would that just be something standard?
I do not believe it'd be a material change, but I do believe that the language "master plan" is used elsewhere within the code and has a unique meaning, and if we're going to make those type changes, I would like to work with staff to do it across the board. But I absolutely understand and agree with the concept that was raised to either call it a supplemental plan, or I love the phrase "guiding plan."
Well, whether or not that's something that's a change that's made today, I do hope that that's something that we can consider moving forward and take into account the comments that have been made in the public, because whether or not this plan passes, my hope is, and from some of the things that I've seen, that some of what's being shared is being heard, is making it through, and it is influencing the outcome ultimately, even if it's not the outcome that we want to see. I still do have concerns as it relates to the, the cost of the interchange, the, the revenue that will be brought in, and I did hear comments last time, and even from a member of the public who spoke in the public hearing, about the revenue that will be brought in for this, and I see that's a lot of the desire that's driven behind the need to, lack a better term, develop this area. I do think that this is a, partially a failure of past policy that could have been considered, where this land undeveloped, each plot, I mean, generally, I'd say contributes about $200 in property taxes, real estate taxes, to the city each year, where someone that has a home on it nearby is contributing thousands of dollars towards the city in the same way, and the city does have the capacity to adopt split-rate tax systems, especially in a landlocked locality, that would put this land on a more equal footing for the revenue that's contributed to the city. Now, that hasn't been done in the past, and it's not something that's going to be done today, but, but doing so wouldn't have allowed the owners to hold on to this land for so long without contributing revenue towards the city, and for us to ultimately find a way that we have to develop this in order to get the revenue in. And if we were going to, it was my hope that this Land Bay B that was originally plotted out for single-family homes, and potentially be more than just one single-family home once zoning reform is considered in two weeks, the amount of revenue that those improvements would bring in separately, that wouldn't require a $50 million minimum dollar interchange to go in, and that's something that might have been incorporated into the character of the neighborhood and been included with them. Finally, you know, on the remarks to work with the city, I do appreciate the requests, and I do hope that they'll be done. At, at the same time, I feel like the best way to get the neighborhood involved to work with the city on rezoning would have been to put forward a full plan that garnered their support, because doing so would have brought them to the table in a way that really would have made sure that they were fully at the table for this rezoning application, and not finding a way to just, as one is finding today, get, get the best opportunity with what's put before us. So with that, Mayor Lee, those are all the remarks that I have.
All right. Anybody else? Well, let me say, I want to thank, did someone say it? All right, Vice Mayor?
I think Joe had something to say.
I, I just had two follow-up questions. One of the requests that Rupert Cutler made in his letter was to ask the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation to conduct a Natural Heritage Inventory of the site. I wanted to ask the possibility for that to be done, and when that could be done, and aligned with that, I know, Bob, you shared in the update that staff did meet with Blue Ridge Land Conservancy and the Conservation Fund to discuss possible options regarding securing land identified in this plan as open space, with the caveat that if it's approved, that gives me a little concern. Can you talk a little bit more about the, the order of that process, and, and if we could conduct this Natural Heritage Inventory?
Yeah, the, so the Natural Heritage, for the, the inventory piece would really, as I understand, largely be up to, it's still privately owned, so in order for-
It'd be up to the owners, though.
Correct, correct. The conversation that we have initiated, we didn't initiate it, they, they requested a meeting, and we had that meeting with the, the Conservancy, as, as mentioned, and the Conservation Fund, and it is to have a conversation about actually, ultimately, the acquisition of the property here that is identified as open space, that, that could occur separate and apart from any kind of subsequent rezoning, that could occur concurrent with some kind of rezoning, this is just the beginning of that conversation associated with. I think the, the conversation that with them was that we would revisit that after the, the vote today, because presumably, the conversation would be different, depending on the outcome, with the, the landowners. The, I think the, the hope was that if the plan is approved, that the landowners then have a delineated area that is obviously identified for open space, and, and frankly, they have some motivation to actually talk with the, the Conservancy about the space that is designated as open space, whereas if it is simply kept in its current status, they have less motivation to do that. But that, that is a conversation that has just begun as of last week with them.
Thank you.
Let me-
I just had a question, if I could, thank you.
A question?
Yeah, it's just a question for, this just piggybacks on what Dr. Vice Mayor said with regards to Dr. Cutler's statement. I know it is part of the record, but he did have some unanswered questions, and I did not know if those questions will be followed up with a response even to him, as one of them that was alluded to by the Vice Mayor. And one of the questions that was asked, and I know the answer, but I just want the public to hear, was would the developer, if this plan is, you know, adopted, which I'm sure it will be, if the developer has to have the property rezoned, and I believe it is a yes- it is a yes.
Yes, yes, this is, as you all have alluded to, and we've said previously, that if approved, this property remains zoned as it currently is zoned, and subsequent changes to that will require a whole nother process to go through, including public hearings in order to change that zoning. So yes, that still is an additional step that is necessary.
Right. And I know my council member, Voloson, said with regards to, and I just wanted to ask this, about the permit. You put that in the form of, and correct me, and I know you will, that that's something that will, that can come after, when the plan is, and not before, because it was presented as if this, the permit should have been done beforehand, and you were saying that they can be done after the plan is...
So the area, my understanding, and Bobby can correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is an update to the area plan? It is not the master development plan, which would actually come from the developer that states, you know, this is where I'm building this. These are more of guidelines than anything else. So once we have a plan that has more defined, you know, this is where we're going to do things, then they can go to the appropriate agencies to get their permitting.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, and that is true with when City Plan 2040 was approved, and we have more than thirty plans of neighborhood plans, other kinds of parks and recreation, master plan, all kinds of other plans. None of those, of course, are subjected to any kind of permitting requirements, because they have no, they have no legal development rights associated with them. That's the next step in the process, which, again, would be a development plan, arguably, I mean, I'm sorry, rezoning, and arguably, the, any developer that would be seeking a rezoning would take what's in this plan and adapt it to be able to actually use for the development plan. But this itself does not, again, enable anyone to actually develop anything on this property other than what it is already zoned for. In order to change that, they'd have to go through that process, at which time, some of those permits that are referenced would very likely become part of that conversation.
Okay. And the last thing is just an ax, and that is that the landowners or whoever will definitely have some conversation with the community, which has not happened and should have happened, in my opinion, and what I've heard from the community, that there will be that outreach, that they will want to talk with them, since it is affecting their properties.
Yeah, and we certainly will bring that to their attention again, obviously.
That's what I'm saying, it's just an ax. And I just want to be on record saying that that has been...
Yeah, there is kind of one spokesperson for all the landowners that has kind of coordinated. Two of the landowners here have been landowners here for generations, and I trust probably have had conversations in the past with some of the folks in the area, but we certainly will pass that along to them. That is actually a part of the conversation we had with the Conservancy as well, as to how that conversation would move forward, because it is not our property, and so ultimately, they're going to have to have that conversation with those property owners in terms of any kind of dedication of open space as well.
I just wish it had been sooner than rather than later. Thank you.
Let me say that I want to thank Councilman Voloson for his work on this, the research, and I think one of the things we try to do on council is to get to a point where we can moderate, mediate, work together, compromise. I think your work here is solid in terms of what it does, what it speaks to, and there's a lot of things behind us, but this is where we're going forward. We're challenging, take an oath, to move Roanoke forward in terms of the things that we're facing and what we're looking at, and, you know, when times come and people talk about legacy and urban renewal, this is not urban renewal. This is something that helped to keep Roanoke moving forward, and as you mentioned in there, even with those people who own homes. If one person says, "I don't want to do it," then that's lost the whole piece. But we're not backing away. We want neighbors, we want community engagement, we've always wanted that. Now, it may not have been done the way we wanted in the past, but as we go forward, that's what we're going to do. I don't think this council, at least the majority of us, are thinking that that's not going to happen. So thank you. I can't see, I mean, it has something in it for everybody, from what I've heard discussed here. So as we go forward, we're going to continue to look at that. The Planning Commission, the Plan Department, will continue to focus on these things that we discussed. So we're just not turning it loose and saying, "Hey, that's it." We're looking for places and to do, to work together, and so this master plan, and, you know, we're going to deal later with the term "master plan," but right now, we're calling it "the master plan" and to amend the city's planning. So we want to make sure that everything is included, and so your ordinance made it easier for me to deal with that and to struggle in part. So I appreciate your work on that. All right, with that, Madam Clerk, I'm ready to call a roll.
All right. Mr. Voloson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
No.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
No.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the majority of council has approved this plan, this ordinance has approved. Thank you. All right, we're down now to introductions and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have none. All right, item number eleven in motion and miscellaneous business inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of council. Let me say that this past Saturday, there were two hundred football officials at the Hotel Roanoke. Matter of fact, it filled up the ballroom, the entire ballroom there, and college officials, officials that refereed the Super Bowl were there, and it's a training camp for college football officials, and they were there, and what I was pleased, they're always pleased to come to Roanoke, they're impressed with Roanoke, but there was an individual, a state trooper, who was a football official, who about a year and a half ago was chasing, in a car chase, and he ended up getting hurt and lost both of his legs. So he's trying to come back. I admire him, he's trying to come back to be a football official, and so he spoke, and what Chief Booth and Sheriff Hatch did was bring a large section of their officers there to be with him, and I thought it was a great thing, and it showed Roanoke and our support for not only this individual who's really determined, who lost both of his legs, but he's determined to come back to be a football official. But it talks about the welcoming community that we live in, the current community, and those officers there, in their blues, were there to support him, and I think it was a special thing, and I mean, and I hadn't seen the ballroom that pool in a long time, so it was a great day for our city, and I appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have four things, I believe it's only four things. First, and it was meant to be three, back revisiting our previous topic, as we discussed the terminology around "master plan," and I reflect further now on Parks and Recreation is in the process of making an update, and I love Parks and Rec, but "master plan" may not be the appropriate term moving forward. With the consent of this council, and I don't believe we need a vote unless there's an objection, could we refer this subject to the EEAB, have them look at this and work with our city attorney to determine where throughout our code or otherwise, we need to consider alternative terms and such, especially just addressing around this topic?
If you can also include staff with that, please.
And staff. I don't believe we're going to vote, but yes.
I have no objection.
As long as it's just not you alone. All right, that's number one. Number two, I've been hearing a couple, ramblings isn't the right term, but, right, about neighborhood leadership, and where we have some vacancies, where we have some pockets, and how that relates to the business that council is getting done, and I know I've heard from a number of people, this Neighborhood Association is missing someone, and there may be issues in other Neighborhood Associations. If we could just get a report back at some point about where neighborhood leadership is in those groups and what we can do, I know we had some ARPA funding set aside for leadership to help address, because ultimately, having people in those positions, working with the neighborhoods, making sure that our policies are communicated to them, and then the recommendations make their way back to us is very important, because we rely on even just information going to our neighborhood leaders to get out to the people who live in it, so that they're reviewing the policies before they come to this dais. Number three is on zoning, and that's actually as it related to it. I know we have zoning reform coming up at our next council meeting, and that we will be reviewing rather comprehensive ordinance that addresses a number of facets, and there are lots of opinions that are coming in, and more than I expect to come in, up through that public hearing. Where we removed the parking requirement a few years ago as it relates to new developments and zoning, it's my hope that, and city manager may know, this may include more than parking, could we get at least a few reports, and people are here while we're considering that, about what future steps, if this reform were to pass, we might be needing to consider as it relates to increased density. I could tell you already, in my neighborhood, the amount of people that park within that fifteen feet before you get to the curb is already a fair bit, and with increased density, while we don't have parking requirements, I could see it becoming more of an issue, but what can we be looking for down the pike? Whether or not there's any action that we need to be taking now on those items, but just be prepared, if this passes, what does this mean down the road?
Just for clarity, you're talking specifically in that case regarding parking?
Yeah, that's the one that comes to top of mind, as it is related, I mean, there are things that are brought up about water and sewer, I'm not sure that there's so much of council action there, but as it relates to parking, I mean, there's, whether or not there's going to be future action we have to take around parking in neighborhoods if there's increased density, although we hope this leads to more use of public transit, but whatever be thought around reports that surround or outside of, directly on the rezoning and where that may lead to going forward. And then my very last thing, I appreciated the conversation we had this morning on historic preservation, meeting with ARB, and finally getting a beginning update of those guidelines. I hope that the neighborhoods will be involved in those. It just made me reflect a little bit further on the impetus that we put on our citizens for historic preservation and what we want to see be done there, and my hope is that, I know this council has very limited resources, and historic structures are within our parks, and we've always had to take other priorities rather than our historic structures, because we have very many needs. We have rec centers that are out of date, we have youth programs that need to be funded, but as this conversation moves forward, and we try to give some leeway to help our people in the private development of historic structures, to see the city hopefully find some way to take some increased responsibility and ownership of our own historic structures. I know a few years from now, I think in this year twenty-eight or twenty-nine, we have a major investment that we're looking forward in the Fishburne Mansion, but something that I liked in our budget hearings last month was how you're looking at carving out funds for the Climate Action Plan, and is there any small amount even that we can set aside for historic maintenance going forward? So that way, we don't end up in these scenarios where we have buildings that haven't been addressed for a very long time. That's a very big ask, but just a comment I wanted to make, and something out there.
My short answer to that would be yes, and roof replacement is the place to begin with. It's probably nothing more important for the structures that we own that are historic, including the building that we're actually in and adjacent to, is making sure that our roofs actually stay in the condition they're in and others. But yes, I think that becomes part of our overall stewardship of buildings that we have, some of which are, not only buildings, infrastructure, some of which are over a hundred years old. So yeah, absolutely, we can continue that conversation.
Thank you. Mayor Lee, I'm done.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I was just going to just piggyback on what you said, Mayor, about the Hotel Roanoke. The mayor and I had an opportunity to be together last Thursday and Friday at the Korean Leadership Conference, and there was some great information, they had panelists, and they talked a lot about the things that Korean was, they were doing their update. And there was three takeaways that was of interest to me. One was dealing with the mental health piece, as they do outreach into the community. The other one dealt with one of my colleague's topics that the city has backed in with the National League of Cities, which was on the prescription program, and that was one of the topics they talked about, was trying to find ways to help the patients get their medicine, and I shared that with the, one of the panelists, and asked them to reach back out to the city, because we were looking at that information that had come to us through one of my colleagues down there, which I don't have to call her name, and that, who had brought that before the council, and that perhaps there was something that they could get from that to share with their patients. And the last thing is that they will be rolling out a program with robots. They will have four over at Korean, I mean, at Roanoke Memorial, that will be working in the emergency room, as well as working on the floors. So they had a robot on display to show us. They will have a couple of them also up in, I guess, a couple of their hospitals in New River Valley, I think, and maybe in Rockville, in Rockbridge County, I'm not sure, you can't hold me to that. But it was a great, great conference, and I was glad that I went. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is vacancies on certain authorities, board, commissions, and committees appointed by council. The Vice Mayor will be sharing with us the appointments and reappointments, and as we come around and the clerk call your name, if you're in agreement, please let it be known by the vote of all nominees. All right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, okay.
Okay. So for the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, we appoint Deborah Carter to fill the unexpired term of office for Kate Johnson, ending December thirty-first, 2025, and we appoint Danielle Austin Johnson to, for a new term, following the expiration of William Lee's term. So that would be a new term that begins immediately. For the Fair Housing Board, we appoint Rachel Tillys to fill the expiration of a three-year term of office for Sharnika Elliott, ending March thirty-first, 2024, and that will then carry into a new term. For the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, while we appointed Nikki Vudran at our February meeting, we need to approve residency waiver requirements for her, and that's to the Mill Mountain Advisory Board. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we appoint Amazetta Anderson to, for a new three-year term, which is at the end of the three-year term of office for Diane Simmons. For the Roanoke Arts Commission, we appointed Helen Dean at our February meeting, but we need to approve a residency waiver for her. Also, for the Roanoke Arts Commission, we are appointing Mary Jean Levin to fill the unexpired term of office for Ilsa Saavedra Rogan, ending June thirtieth, 2026, and Ayala Boyd to fill... Sorry, I'm trying to get my language right here. To complete the term of Laura Carden, ending June thirtieth, 2024, and then to extend into the new term. For the Roanoke Public Library Board, we're appointing Julie Drury to fill the unexpired term of Amy Morgan, ending June thirtieth, 2024. The Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Thomas Carr is appointed to the unexpired term of office for Kalen Spickler, ending August thirty-first, 2026. For the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, we're appointing Lutheria Smith to fill the unexpired term of Don Tanner Erdman, ending June thirtieth, 2024. For the Youth Athletics Review Board, we're appointing Patricia Sheedy to fill the, to fill the term of office that was for Heather Hamid-Moore, which will be effective immediately. And I believe those are all of them. Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, you mentioned extending the term past the June thirtieth for the Fair Housing one, I believe. Could that possibly roll over to... Could that possibly roll over to, I think there was another one you just called out that was...
Yeah, I just didn't repeat the whole thing.
Okay, no, I mean, I was just saying that we could, that just keeps coming back.
The presumption is that it would roll over.
Yes. I just wanted it for, just to put it out there, so they all come back by June, to ask for them to be reappointed.
That would apply to Patricia Sheedy for the Youth Athletics Review Board, that would apply to Lutheria Smith for the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board, and the one that you just mentioned. And also the Roanoke Public Library Board with Julie Drury.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you can call a roll, and if you're in favor of those appointments and reappointments, please let it be known by the scent of all nominees.
Mr. Voloson?
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Mr. Pretty?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
All nominees.
Ms. Whiteboy?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. And thank you. All right, there being no further business, set forth to come before the council, the council meeting is hereby adjourned.